Good morning and welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, February 7th, and it is 9:01, so we'll call this meeting to order. We ask folks who are with us, if you're both willing and able to stand for the invocation delivered by Reverend Donna Gultry of St. Paul's United Methodist Church, then it will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend, thank you for being here.
Thank you. If you'll please join me in an attitude of contemplation. God of all, as the Wichita City Council begins its work today on behalf of the city and its residents, we do seek guidance, bring clarity to those entrusted to the task of leading. May they weigh the opportunities before them with an eye toward enabling the physical infrastructure and the community services of the city to support its needs for the people in their work and in their play. May they seek to balance opportunities for growth. And Lord, we are grateful for the news of new jobs created in our city, those that benefit those who created them, as well as those employed, along with the businesses of the supporting services. And we are grateful, as we enter this month of February as Black History Month, for the legacy of the African-Americans in our community who paved the way, remembering in particular the impact of the Dockham sit-in. May we continue to be a city that encourages justice and peace for all, borrowing from the words of James Weldon Johnson. Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring. Ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let us rejoicing rise high as the listening skies. Let it resound loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Shadowed beneath thy high hand, may we forever stand true to our God, true to our native land. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with unity and justice.
Thank you, Pastor. Madam Clerk.
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 24th, 2023.
Does every member have a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion about the minutes, now make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast their vote. I've received 78 votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Proclamations, Monarch Butterfly Month.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for Monarch Butterfly Month, please make your way to the front. Proclamation of the city of Wichita, Kansas, founded 1870. Whereas, the monarch butterfly is iconic North American species, whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans of all generations. And whereas, over the last 20 years, there has been an 85% to 95% decline in the Mexico population of eastern monarchs, which is comparable to the decline seen in the western monarch population in California. Whereas, the monarch butterfly is extremely beneficial, pollinating many, cultivating flowers and crops, and serves as an indicator species for the ecological health of large geographic areas. And whereas, cities, towns, and counties can play a critical role to help save the monarch butterfly, and the city of Wichita has declared an interest in becoming Kansas' first monarch city to be designated by the Monarch City USA, a nonprofit organization dedicated to helping the monarch butterfly recover city by city. And whereas, the month of May is the peak time of the monarch butterfly's spring migration through the state of Kansas. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the city of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May, Monarch Butterfly Month, in the city of Wichita, and encourage residents in our community to plant and protect native milkweed and nectar sources so that monarch butterflies have the resources necessary to produce successful generations and sustain their spectacular migration.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Katie Eddy. I'm the management analyst for the Park and Recreation Department for the city of Wichita. I just want to say how excited the Park and Rec Department is to get this proclamation and the first step towards becoming a Monarch City USA, the first in Kansas, as it was mentioned. We're excited to constantly be improving our policies to work to better the environment for our local pollinators, so that we can improve our environment as a whole. And this isn't something that just the city is working on, the Park Department, but everyone in the city of Wichita should be working on. You can plant nectarine flowers and milkweed in your own gardens at home, so that you can attract monarch butterflies and help save the species and work together with us.
Madam Clerk.
Beth Rush, Animal Control and Why Calls Are Not Handled Better.
All right, now we're getting into our public agenda. Of course, for folks who are new, please be mindful of the timer on the bottom. You do have five minutes. We ask you to say your name and address, if you're comfortable saying your address. If you bump up towards that five-minute mark, we'll let you, of course, complete your thought, but we just ask folks to be mindful of the time. Welcome and good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Beth Rush, and I live in the 2200 block of South Fallujah. I'm speaking regarding some issues that we're having with animal control. Our neighborhood received a letter from the post office regarding some dogs being loose in the area. And I had called the post office about this, and there was one specific dog that was out. When I called, the post office had said there had been numerous reports about this dog. And if animal control would have taken care of that problem, there never would have been post office box going to the curb at the 2300 block of South Chautauqua, because that dog had been reported out three times previous before. So they did not pick up the dog in a timely fashion. And then, the next day, there was another dog in question. That dog was out. I had called. It was after 3 o'clock. They do not answer phones after 3 o'clock. We had just found that out. I followed that dog for two hours in my car, and I saw that dog chase an Amazon driver and charge at that Amazon driver. I called back, and they said there was a two-hour wait before they would come out and do anything. So I felt like that was kind of unacceptable as well. Most recently, people were calling me about some roosters they were having an issue with within a neighborhood. They had called numerous times about these roosters. Animal Control did nothing about that. Children were not able to sleep and all that kind of stuff. So I called Lieutenant Purcell himself and spoke with him about this. He got very rude with me on the phone. He asked me, did I know specifically what I was talking about? And did I know the address, which I did? He looked into that and said, oh, I'm sorry, we had the wrong address, and so we never went back and addressed the issue. Well, I contacted his captain, Captain East. That problem has been resolved. So I'm asking that we do an audit of them, and they see how the phones are answered, they see how the calls are answered, because within our neighborhood, we've had to get numerous letters because of something that they cannot go pick up a dog for. And I think it's, you know, their responsibility, when we're getting letters and I'm having to do their job of picking up, you know, chasing dogs and sending them in my car, because I feel unsafe, and it's just not me. I have friends that are runners, that they're afraid because they can't go out and run on a path, and they've called numerous times. So I'm just requesting that maybe we should look at having an audit for them. And I also want to say congratulations to Councilman Hoheisel on his new baby boy. Thank you.
Couple things. First, Ms. Rush, thank you for being here and sharing your experience. It's not a unique experience. We've heard quite a bit of feedback when it comes to dogs loose in the neighborhood. We've been attempting to address it, particularly with the last budget, by bringing on another staffer with the animal, not the MAE Society, with, what is it, Mike? Animal Services. So I'm going to actually default or give the floor to Councilmember Vice Mayor Hoheisel to give us a brief update, because he's been really spearheading this issue.
I appreciate that, Mayor. We hear you. We've been looking at this. There's issues with getting the new personnel hired. We are going to expand the hours. Have you seen the recent workshop we had two weeks ago?
I did see that, and that was a result of me, you know, sending a lot of emails. I don't know how many people were copied online, but that was a work of, you know, me sending a lot of emails saying, you know, please do something.
Right, right, yeah. As the mayor said, we hear you guys. We're working on it. We are looking at it. We're getting more in-depth, and I can chat with you a little later about some of the things that we've done here in the last two weeks or so to kind of tie up some of these loose ends. And I appreciate the work you're doing in the community and others who are just trying to make sure that our neighborhoods are safe for the runners, for the children, and for all of us. So I do appreciate that.
Because there should not have been those 30 mailboxes that went to the curb. That should not have happened.
And some of that was also communication with the post office, because there were some issues around that, and we are in talks with the postmaster about streamlining the process, making sure everything goes through her to get the final okay. So we are working with the post office to address those issues as well.
Okay.
And can't thank you enough for not only going above and beyond, but showing up to a meeting at 9:00 AM on a Tuesday. I know that's not the most convenient time, but also spearheading this issue in the community, bringing it to our attention and being a resource so that we can continue to make inroads to solve this problem. So thank you so much for that. Please keep working with us, and we will, of course, continue to keep you updated on progress, and let us know if it's not working, so that we can fix it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 20.
All right, consent agenda. Has everybody have a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there any discussion? The chair recognizes Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, sir. I would just like to point out that on item number 4A, that is District 5, not District 6, as noted in the green sheet. Just a simple correction.
Further discussion? If there's no further discussion on the consent agenda, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda items 1 through 20 with the correction that was presented. To accept that as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Council Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast their vote. I've received 78 votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Board of bids and contracts dated February 6th, 2023.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council, Josh Lauber, Department of Finance. The board of bids for February 6th, 2023 are as follows. For Naffenzinger Park Turf, excuse me, for commercial lawn management of Wichita Incorporated in the amount of $169,945. For engineering, we have the 2023 Outsource Pavement Preservation Program, CIP Ultra Thin Bonded Overlay Phase 1. For Conspec Incorporated, DBA Kansas Paving, in the amount of $1,862,445.45, subject to the approval of a new engineer's estimate and budget authorization February 21st. We have the 2023 Outsource Pavement Preservation Program, CIP Ultra Thin Bonded Overlay Phase 2. For Pearson Construction LLC, in the amount of $1,829,747.85, subject to a new engineer estimate and budget authorization February 21st. We have the 21st Street North from I-135 to Mosley, Phase 1, for Pearson Construction LLC, in the amount of $2,718,722. We have the Stormwater Sewer, number 778 Stormwater Sewer Repair, Mooring's Fourth Edition, Pre-Utility Maintenance Contractors LLC, in the amount of $110,250. We have the Stormwater Sewer Paving Buffalo Grove Edition for Conspec Incorporated, DBA Kansas Paving, for an aggregate bid total of $429,620.50. We have the 2023 Outsource Pavement Preservation Program, Joint and Crack Seal Phase 1, for PPJ Construction Incorporated, in the amount of $237,100 negotiated to the engineer's estimate. For purchasing, we have the License Plate Recognition Camera Hardware and Software for Flock Group Incorporated, DBA Flock Safety, for an aggregate bid total of $250,000. We have the interior and exterior modifications of two residential sites, deferring this to February 13th. We have the interior and exterior modifications of 12 single-family homes, defer to February 13th. We have traffic signalization components for I-Terris Incorporated, in the amount of And we have the, I have to write this one down, pre-stressed concrete cylinder pipe, pipeline spare parts for TPG Pressure Incorporated, in the amount of $336,680. We have the Jaws of Life for WIS Fire and Safety Equipment LLC, in the amount of $77,557.20. This is how to become a vendor with the city of Wichita. These are current open request proposals out on the street, and I would recommend to approve the bid awards as recommended.
All right. Questions for staff? Councilmember Frye.
Could you go back to slide four, please? I think it was the ultra-thin Phase 1 overlay.
Yes.
So the bids received by Pearson was lower than the recommendation. Why are we going with the higher bid?
Correct. That's a good question. The solicitation documents specifically have this language alluded to it, just because of the volume of work, and then I'll let Mr. Janson speak further.
Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering, Mayor and Councilmember Frye. So the nature of this work is across all six districts, and this is on our arterial streets. So part of our program every year, it's been something that's worked really well as we've gone through this optimizing our Outsource Pavement Preservation Program. So what we do is we go in and make repairs to arterial streets, put a new surface down. We have found over the last few years that it's been a challenge to make the schedule work, especially with one contractor. So we set out this year to hire two contractors. Provides more efficiency, more control over the schedule. So within the bid documents, we said that we would take the lowest aggregate combination of the two bids not being the same contractor. So that's the result that you see. One is higher than the other, but this ended up with that lowest aggregate total. So this allows us for two contractors to do the same work.
And that's why there's two phases.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They'll all get done at the same time, but that allowed us to bid it that way.
I just want to make it clear for the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions for staff? See none. Is there a discussion on this item? See none. If there is no discussion, then I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast their vote. I've received 78 votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Petitions for public improvements.
Good morning, Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. The petitions for your consideration today include signatures representing 100% of each improvement district and are valid per Kansas statute. First development is MPK Edition. This is in District 4 and includes a new petition for sanitary sewer improvements. Central Community Church Edition in District 5 includes a petition for water improvements. The courtyards at Jacobs Farm Edition, also in District 5, includes new petitions for water drainage, sanitary sewer, and paving improvements. In June of 2022, the city council approved drainage improvements to serve Cedardale Edition, which is in District 5. Developers submitted a revised petition with a revised budget to meet current market conditions. Again, that is a revised petition for water improvements. Staff recommends city council approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the new and amending resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Other questions for staff on this item? See none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the new and amending resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast their vote. I've received 78 votes. That motion does indeed pass. Madam Clerk.
Repair or removal of dangerous and unsafe structure, 1421 North Madison Avenue.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. I'm Kaylin Nethercot with MABCD. The two properties for consideration today in unfinished business are both in District 1. By way of review, these properties were first reviewed by the city council on August 2nd, 2022, and received extensions until today's meeting. The cases were first reviewed by the Board of Code Standards and Appeals on May 2nd, 2022. Our first property is at 1421 North Madison. It's had an open housing case for 16 months. The property's taxes are outstanding in the amount of, for 2018 through 2022, in the amount of $5,093.64, which includes assessments for mowing, nuisance abatement, and an emergency board up. An assessment is pending for 2023 for lot cleanup in the amount of $1,291.44. The property was placarded as uninhabitable in August of 2020 and has been vacant for an unknown number of years. It should be noted that the Wichita Police Department has requested MABCD assistance with this property on one occasion. Premise conditions include trash, overgrown vegetation, and tall grass and weeds. The structure is a vacant and open one-story frame dwelling. The structure has a shifting and cracking block concrete foundation with missing blocks, missing vinyl siding, sagging and badly worn composition roof with holes, and a dilapidated front porch. You might remember at the last council meeting when this was reviewed, a young man named Jeffrey Matheny was here to speak with you. He's a delight to work with. Just within the last two weeks, he's managed to get this house transferred to his name through the probate process. His grandfather owned it. He has good intentions to remove the structure on his own. We would like to request a 90-day extension on this property. He only has had it in his name for about two weeks, so he really hasn't had time to do anything yet. Hopefully, we'll be able to offer him some suggestions on how to do that very affordably, so that he minimizes the amount of debt that that property is burdened with.
So with that, because this structure does reside in District 1, the chair will yield the floor to the council member representing District 1, Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. With that recommendation, I would like to defer this item to the April 11th city council meeting.
There's been a motion to defer. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion on the floor is to defer this item until April 11th, as requested by staff. If there's no discussion, a motion has been seconded. Clerk will open a roll. Members will cast their vote. Has it every single member cast their vote?
I was talking. Vice Mayor Hoheisel pointed out, I looked at the wrong date.
We'll defer to legal. There was a motion that did pass. However, we need to amend the motion, because it's apparent that, according to the steel-trap mind of Vice Mayor Hoheisel, the 11th actually is not 90 days from now. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Therefore, is there an easy procedural motion that we could make to change that date from the 11th to the?
I don't know. 90 days is absolutely a magic number. I think April 11th would suffice if staff agrees. We'll do it at the next available meeting after April 11th. How's that?
That works.
Thank you.
Perfect. Yes, because if not, we would add a reverse it. Okay, thank you all for the intention.
We got this.
And we would like Councilmember Johnson to have a recorded vote on this. Councilmember Johnson, if you could signal to the clerk your vote. That means the motion does pass, 7 to 0. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Repair or removal of dangerous and unsafe structure, 1512 North Payette Avenue.
This property has had an open housing case for over a year. The property taxes are outstanding for 2019 through 2022 in the amount of $2,004.15, which includes special assessments for mowing. The property was placarded as uninhabitable in January of 2022 and has been vacant for at least two years. In the last five years, there's been at least one reported police incident at this location. Premise conditions include tall grass and scattered trash. The structure is a vacant one-story framed dwelling. It has a shifting and cracking concrete foundation, missing siding, sagging and badly worn composition roof with holes, and a dilapidated front and rear porch. Most notably, the south wall is bowing outward. We have not had contact with the owner on this one. No one's been to the meetings, and we've not received phone calls or correspondence.
Chair, defer the floor to Councilmember Johnson, as this item resides in District 1.
Thanks, Mayor. Is there anyone here representing this property? Seeing none, I would move that the city council close the public hearing, declare the building to be a dangerous and unsafe structure, and accept the Board of Building Code and Standards and Appeals recommended action to proceed with condemnation, allowing 10 days to start demolition and 10 days to complete removal of the structure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast their vote. I've received 78 votes. That motion does indeed pass. Madam Clerk.
Extension of industrial revenue bond exemption, Spirit Aero Systems, Inc.
I forgot to thank the last presenter. Thank you, by the way.
Troy Anderson, City Manager's Office, Honorable Mayor, members of council. Based on some recent conversations with the applicant, the applicant has requested that this item be laid over for one week.
I make a motion to... I make a motion to to pass over this item and to revisit this item at our next regularly scheduled meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and the seconded. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I've received seven yay votes. That motion does pass, and this item will be visited again next week. Madam Clerk.
Extension of industrial revenue bond exemption, Lee Air.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Tim Goodpast here with the City Manager's Office. The item before you today is a five-year review of a tax abatement for Lee Air. Lee Air was founded in 1981 and is a manufacturer of aircraft electronics specializing in electronic controllers, printed circuit board assemblies, and other electronic accessories for civilian and military aircraft. The company is located at 3,000 South Hydraulic. This aerial shows where they are located, which is south of Pawnee on Hydraulic. On November 8 of 2016, the City Council approved the issuance of industrial revenue bonds for the acquisition and renovation of the building at 3,000 South Hydraulic, and the bond issue at that time was a $5 million industrial revenue bond issue. At the time, the employment was 18 individuals and projected that there would be 46 net new jobs over a five-year term for a total of 64 total employees. The company has added 17 jobs and is currently at 35 total employees. The Economic Development Guidelines provide for an extension of a tax abatement if the majority of compliance criteria is met, which includes capital investments, actual return on investment based on the actual annual job creation, and temporarily achieving the job creation. Lee Air did invest $5 million in this facility. The company has almost doubled in size from the 18 at the time that the bonds were issued in 2016 to 35 today, and the actual new updated return on investment meets or exceeds the requisite one-to-one ratio. This is an updated cost-benefit analysis that was conducted by the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State University, based on the actual job creation over five years, which shows an overall return to the city of 1.18 to 1, 1.15 to 1 for the city's general fund, and 1.24 to 1 for the city's debt service fund. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the City Council approve the extension of the ad valorem tax exemption for Lee Air.
Questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, Chair recognizes Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Hoheisel, as this resides in District Three.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mr. Goodpasture said, they have met two of the three criteria for an extension, and I think it's wise for us to show a little bit of grace for people who are still recovering from the pandemic. So with that being said, I recommend that City Council approve the extension of the ad valorem tax exemption for BANDLEY, B-A-N-D-D-L-1, Lee Air.
Motion has been made. I will second that motion. If there's no discussion on said motion, then Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I've received seven yay votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Acceptance of National Park Service Land and Water Conservation Fund Grants.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Troy Houtman, Director of Parks and Recreation. The item I have for you today is in regards to acceptance of the National Park Service Land and Water Conservation Fund grants. A little bit of background. These two grants are in particular with Chisholm Creek Park and with Pratt Wetlands. So on August 18 of 2020, City Council authorized staff to submit two applications to KDWP, which is also known as Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks, for improvements to Pratt Wetlands in District Five and Chisholm Creek Park in District One. Through the Land and Water Conservation Funds, this is the mechanism that helps us bring grants to our parks. The LWCF was established in 1964 to protect natural areas, water resources, cultural heritage, increase recreational opportunities, provide resources for states to help fund local government initiatives. So what we are looking for is the LWCF awarded us $531,585 to the city of Wichita for these projects. These grants will be administered by KDWP. The investments will include Pratt Wetlands located at the trailhead near the parking lot, will be an open-air shelter, drinking fountain, and interpretive playground. Over at Chisholm Creek Park North, we'll be looking at a 10-foot-wide paved bike-and-walk trail around the park, around the lake, and a paved parking lot, also a fishing dock for American with Disabilities Act compliance. The improvements would include, I'm sorry, the improvements will increase park usage, environmental education, programming opportunities, and appeal to more families and young children. This aligns with our goals with the City of Wichita Parks and Recreation and Open Space Plan. The grant funding ends on September 30 of 2025, which is important, gives us a lot of time to complete these projects. LWCF provides 50% reimbursement for these projects, providing approximately $281,000 for Pratt Wetlands and approximately $250,000 for Chisholm Creek Park North. Matching funds in the same amount have been identified as available from our capital improvement projects. Specifically, Chisholm Creek Park North, we have some funding available for that, and Pratt Wetlands Park, we have funds available for that project as well, that these will be matching. Law Department has reviewed and approved the grant agreements as to form, and has recommended that City Council accept the National Park Service Land and Water Conservation Fund grants and authorize the necessary signatures for acceptance. Stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. With that, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Fry as this item resides in District Five.
Thank you, and also in District One. So hopefully, it could be a joint motion and a second. So first off, I'd like to also thank staff for identifying this opportunity and completing the application. Proccat Wetlands is a long-term project, and having these extra funds available to finish it out certainly is most welcome. So with that, I make the motion that we accept the National Park Service Land and Water Conservation Fund grants and authorize the necessary signatures.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson.
Second.
Motion has been made and the seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I've received seven yay votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
American Rescue Plan Act State and Local Recovery Funds Project.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Tammy Snow, Fire Chief. I'm here today to ask for the utilization of some of the money that was set aside in the ARPA plan to pay the wages for the recruits that we were able to hire for the SAFER grant. So with that, just a little bit of background. The city was awarded $72.4 million in American Rescue Plan State and Local Recovery Funds. The 2324 adopted budget included, excuse me, $3 million in ARPA funds for implementing the fire optimization initiatives. On March 1 of 2022, $250,000 was approved to fund the preparation of recommendations for future deployment. On October 11, the city accepted a little over $10 million for the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, or in other words, referred to as a SAFER grant, for 42 additional fire personnel, boosting our current workforce by 10%. It also increased, or it also with that, hiring 42 people increased our personnel costs of a little over $1 million due to the training prior to the grant period. The grant performance period starts on March 14. We have to have those 42 personnel hired prior to that grant performance period. But in between time, then we also have to pay them. So this would be asking for the funds out of ARPA to pay those personnel until the Grant Performance Fund is instituted in March, or implemented in March. So our recommendation then is to approve fire optimization funding for $1 million. And with that, then I stand for questions.
Questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to improve the increase in the ARPA fire optimization project by $1,220,000 to a total of $1,470,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel.
I'm not sure that those dollar figures are the accurate ones. Can you clarify?
Yeah, no, it should be just $1 million. We lost some of our recruits that we hired in, and so in between the time that I filed this and the time and today, I only need $1 million.
You only want $1 million? You sure you don't want 1.2 million?
I only need $1 million.
Okay, okay. We're gonna redo that motion, then, if...
She already has the 250, so this is authorizing the million.
You want $1 million instead of 1.2 million? Let's redo that motion. And usually with the leaders of department, normally they're asking for more money, but I appreciate this correction. So with that, I make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the increase in the ARPA fire optimization project by $1 million to a total of $1,250,000. Is that right? So I got a yellow sheet, I got a green sheet who's off. What's the total?
We received $250,000 last, first, so we've already acquired that money. I just need $1 million to pay wages for 42 people. So that's all I'm asking for today.
I'm asking the city manager to sign a blank check. No, the fire department.
Yes, Mayor, if you would approve the $1 million and just drop off the very end of the motion.
The very end, okay.
The total amount.
And again, it seems like, and I appreciate the...
And I apologize. There's an error in the draft, the first draft report, and unfortunately, that error was carried over to this. We corrected it in the final report, but it's not corrected on the agenda.
On the green sheet. It's, we're gonna do this one more time.
It started with me. We lost a couple people, so I didn't need as much money as when I originally thought, so.
Let's do this one more time. And if I don't get this, I'm just going to have someone else make a motion. I make a motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the increase in ARPA fire optimization project by $1 million. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Burned that. Inaccurate. I've received 78 votes. That motion does indeed pass. Thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk.
Assistance Firefighters Grant Program Equipment Overview.
Oh, now I'm sweating. We got more. Chief, welcome back.
Good morning again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Tammy Snow, Fire Chief. I'm here today. The Assistant for Firefighter Grant is an open period and closes on February 10, which is on Friday at 5:00. This year, you're gonna see me now, and then you're gonna see me in just a couple minutes, because I'm gonna ask for two things this year as far as on the equipment grant. So with that, the performance period is a 24-month period. The cost share or the match is 10% based on our current population. For this particular grant, the total funding for it is $65,570. If we were to be awarded the grant, the federal funding that we would receive is $59,013, with a match of $6,557. Fire Station 7 is a station that we have identified as our medical specialist. It provides, it has most of our paramedics located at it. It provides advanced medical services. It takes care of our firefighters at emergency scenes, but it also provides significant advanced care to civilians. They currently have, these are referred to as life packs. They currently have two life packs that their end-of-life cycle is at the end of 2024, and we need to replace those. This life pack, the functions that it allows us to perform are to monitor heart rates as a defibrillator. It's a non-invasive blood pressure. It has a 12 lead, and it also allows us to monitor end-of-tidal carbon dioxide monitoring, which basically assesses a person's respiratory rate. So my recommendation is that we authorize the application and accept the acceptance of the grant award for the Assistance of Firefighters Grant Program 2022.
Any questions for staff? See none. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the application for the FY 2022 AFG Program Equipment Overview and authorize any necessary budget adjustments. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members will cast their vote. I've received seven yay votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Assistance of Firefighters Grant Program Vehicle Acquisition.
Good morning for the third time. This time I'm going, or what we would like to do is we would like to tie in a vehicle with our SAFER grant. We're gonna shoot for the moon in regards to, since we've got this short period of time. So with that, we want to make a second submission to the Assistance of Firefighter Grant. Again, the performance period would be 24 months. Cost share would be 10%. This time, we're gonna ask for $1,992,880. If we were to be awarded that amount, the federal funding part of it, they would give us $1,793,599. The local match would then be $199,289. It would be for a Pierce Velocity 100-Foot Mid-Mount Aerial Apparatus. The SAFER grant was written for 42 personnel to place on trucks. This would be an additional truck then to our current fleet. Its functions then would be trunk functions, forcible entry, search and rescue, ventilation, and overhaul. The FY 2021 SAFER grant allowed us, like I said earlier, to place two additional apparatus in the Wichita area. So we're gonna have to take two reserve trucks out of our current fleet, which is going to deplete our reserve fleet apparatus. And also with those two reserve apparatus, since we're gonna bring them into frontline machines, the 14-year vehicle replacement interview interval will soon be approaching with several of our current and those two reserve apparatus in our fleet. So the recommendation would be to authorize the application acceptance of the grant award for the FY 2022 Assistance of Firefighters Grant Vehicle Acquisition Program. And with that, then I'll stand for questions.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Fry.
Thank you. Chief Snow, would then the two reserve trucks go back into reserve once we get these?
Well, that would be ideal, except for with the pandemic, our supply and demand. Right now, they're telling us anywhere between three and four years before we would actually get the new trucks, yeah. So all's gonna depend on when we would be able to receive them. Yes, but yes, as soon as we can get one, we're gonna push some more back into reserve.
Further questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the application for the FY 2022 AFG Program Vehicle Acquisition and authorize necessary budget adjustments. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I've received seven yay votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Wichita Downtown Streets Conceptual Wichita Downtown Streets Conceptual Plan.
Good morning, welcome.
Honorable Mayor, members of council, Troy Anderson, City Manager's office. I just want to take an opportunity just to introduce our consultant, Allison Fletcher with Nelson Nygaard. She's gonna be making the presentation.
Wonderful. Welcome.
Thank you. This is a process that's been going on for a long time, so I'm happy to be here to refresh all of you. This project originated back in, before 2010 with the Project Downtown Master Plan, which was adopted in 2010, which cemented a vision to look at downtown streets as being an important component of assuring and soundproofing the future for downtown. That plan proposed looking at the street hierarchy, making sure that there were multimodal options in the downtown and reassessing the design of some of the streets. This plan itself started back in 2018. I'll talk a bit about the process. It proposes conversion of one-way streets to two-way streets in the downtown. It proposes some roadways that would go from four to three lanes that would have the same ability to carry the capacity that they have today while doing other things as well. Some other things that are inside of the conceptual plan, which I believe many of you are familiar with, having seen the briefing packets and also having recently been at the district advisory boards, there's some aspects of looking at transit corridors, those key corridors being on Broadway and Douglas. This plan was looking at many other plans that were happening, bringing those together in terms of how those fit into the streets of downtown. Those are streets that could be prioritized for even better transit service. And then looking forward, we see a lot more potential for multimodal corridors along First and Second, Waterman, Market and Topeka. This plan also does a lot with a little. It's very pragmatic in terms of looking at striping and signal enhancements in order to get more out of what the streets are doing with what you have today with very little investment. So working with Gary Jansen and their team, we've looked at ways to economically put different improvements in the street of downtown to get more out of them. An example of some of the things that could come out of this plan are very similar to what has happened on Emporia Street with simple restriping and replacement of signals. There was a lot of stakeholder buy-in and what happened with that. So with each of the projects that are within this plan, those would go through a design process, would have community feedback and so on. Talking more about the process itself, this plan is a blueprint of the community vision that came out of many continued events with the community. There were four kind of focused major workshops that happened. The first one started with looking at background plans that relate to the downtown streets and setting goals with the community. That started in early 2019 with the goal-setting workshop here in Wichita. The goals of this plan are around aspects of having more options for getting around the downtown, having better safety. Having better safety makes more people walk in the downtown, which means more business in the downtown and more comfort and enjoyment in the downtown. The second workshop looked at goals in terms of how that could translate to design. Then there were workshops subsequent to that to look at, okay, if we have four or five different alternatives, we were out at Open Streets, we were out at different festivals in the downtown, and then bringing those together with final plans, which we presented in the fall of 2020 through a virtual engagement workshop, which had an in-person parallel at Cent 32, where people could drop in with their masks and participate online. We had a lot of participation in these online surveys that we did in conjunction with each of these workshops. And then now, since that time, we've been coming back to you to refresh where the plan has been, where it's going. We've been doing some refinements to the plan. We had a newly appointed steering committee with the new city administration back in 2022. And so we're bringing the results of all of this community process, all these mailers and surveys that went out and how those have landed into the plan to recommend this plan to you. This is just a list of some of the different activities that we've had. I had about a dozen meetings in the past year, going through steering committee meetings, advisory boards, advance plans meetings, and going to all six district advisory boards. These are some examples of some of the concepts of, okay, taking that community vision and those goals in terms of what's feasible for achieving those goals through the designs of the streets themselves in the downtown. This is an example of before and after of Market Street. Today, Market Street is a one-way street. We know from studies in transportation that one-way streets, that especially multilane one-way streets, can lead to adverse safety outcomes for many users in the streets. You can lead to more human crashes, leads to more jockeying of the lanes and more speeding. Having a two-way street, but also is more intuitive, especially for visitors that are coming, that you want to have commerce in the downtown, having more options, not having to go as many blocks out of your way. So a street like Market Street is something with striping and signals that could be done in the near term while allowing other things to also fit in the street as well. Topeka would be a pair with that, just a couple blocks over, having that two-way, one-way street become a two-way street, having more protected all ages and abilities facilities on that street to make sure that the downtown is for people of all ages. Your grandmother, your kids can be walking safely in the downtown. English Street is another street that could be converted from one-way to two-way. Positive outcome of that is that also more parking supply could fit alongside that street to support the adjacent land uses, to provide more access to that particular district of the downtown. Main Street is a street that's very, very high-speed, just from an example, in terms of four lanes all heading in one direction. It's also a little bit unintuitive when all of a sudden that street abruptly becomes a two-way street, creates very confusing intersections. With very simple restriping, that could be converted to two-way and provide even more access while sustaining the function that it has today for circulation. In the more longer term, going out maybe five years, we could also look at streets like Waterman Street, redesign for that, going from the four to three lanes, allowing some connectivity east-west on that particular street. Also, in the more medium term, Broadway is a very important street to the downtown that could have a very similar, simple four-to-three lane conversion where the two lanes that are currently functioning as left lanes and through lanes could be aligned with each other, so you have better sightlines when you're going down the street. This would also allow the enhancements for transit. This would also bring in the principles from the safe corridor that's happening just north of downtown into the downtown, so that you have a really great pedestrian street coming into the core and heart of your downtown where people want to be. This map kind of summarizes all of those pieces in terms of the implementation phasing. Those streets that are in Navy are those that could be done soon. There's the potential, if this plan is adopted, to have these like earmarked within your capital improvement plan very soon. There's money that's been set aside for these. Those would be Market, Topeka, English and Maine. In the midterm, looking at streets like Broadway and Waterman, ongoing after that, there can be continued design of these projects, improving them as you see how they perform after they're installed. And then there's a project on Douglas that also we would like to have happen after this to continue the community process of looking at what is feasible with that particular corridor. Just going deeper on those financial considerations, the staff is requesting an initiation of $460,000 of the downtown streets implementation budget from the SIP for the design of near-term improvements and the consideration of looking at Douglas Avenue, which was not addressed in this particular plan. Individual projects will be returned to the city council in the future, and each of those individual projects will also be an opportunity for the community to engage in it. This is a plan. It's a plan for what's feasible, what achieves the goals, what is the reflection of the vision from the community, and each of these becomes its own design and engineering project after this plan would be adopted. From the legal considerations side of things, the resolution has been reviewed and approved from the city's law department, and the recommendation from our team is to recommend that city council approve the plan and authorize the necessary signatures. But I am here also with others from the city to answer any questions and discussion that you'd like to engage with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. And again, yes, myself, Allison, we also have Gary Jansen and Tia Romo available for questioning.
Are there questions for staff at this point? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Not really a question, I'm supportive of this. I just want to always highlight if there's ways for us to do more delineation on the bike lanes, off lanes, I think we should do that. I've been looking into some rubber delineators that kind of look like curbs, but just something more than, than the paint. We've heard a lot from folks who ride bikes that sometimes it's dangerous with their paint and drivers don't see it, so I'm supportive. Just want to throw that out there.
Further questions for staff? Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say in my district, I've received a lot of pushback in the last day or so, especially since the article in the newspaper. If you could just explain, which I kind of understand it and am supportive, but most of this is centered around walkability and providing more safety. I mean, public safety is obviously our biggest push, but if you could just explain why some people think we're just trying to randomly switch everything up, if you could just explain a little bit of that, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So this is something that has been an evolution of downtown street review analysis across the nation. Yes, there have been numerous studies. We found a number of success stories around one-way to two-way conversions, not only for the reasons you just described of traffic calming, increased mobility around multimodal transportation, increased safety, creating shorter travel distances for pedestrians crossing streets, but also the economic impact, right? We're finding across the nation that these one-way to two-way conversions are making it easier for businesses to grow and to find opportunities for location of tenants within existing lease spaces, the opportunity for new non-residential as well as residential housing opportunities in the urban core. Again, this has been a transition that folks have been studying over the last couple of decades. The, the, the traffic patterns, not only of vehicular but pedestrian as well, have shifted over the last half-century, right? We're not in a, we're not trying to move hundreds of people into downtown for the workday and then try to get them out of downtown into suburbia as quickly as possible as the model once was 50 years ago, right? Now downtowns are becoming 24/7, 365, vibrant, active places where people live, work and play, and these one-way to two-way conversions are in direct response to that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Not really a question, just a few comments to kind of follow up with that, and I appreciate your question. Prior to being on council, this was a lot of the work that I had done in the past trying to increase mobility. And so I really want to thank staff for working on this and also the consultant for working on this project. I also want to take an opportunity to thank the many, many community members who provided engagement. One of the things that I was really excited and impressed with since 2019, we've had incredible, robust community engagement regarding this and lots of different ways for people to provide input. As I mentioned, upon first blush, I would have said this is about mobility and about safety, but it truly is about economic development. I've always said the world looks a little bit different at maybe one mile an hour when you're walking or 10 miles an hour when you're riding a bike versus 40 miles an hour in a car. And so initiatives like this provide opportunities for people to walk from one venue to another, maybe make a purchase, maybe stopping at a cup of coffee, all those different things that we want for economic development, but it also brings people down to the core. But I think the ultimate goal is truly to attract and retain talent in our community, and this is one of the things that people have told us they want. So I will be supportive of this and thank you to staff and the community members for all their work on this project. Thank you.
Further questions for staff? See none. Thank you, and please stay on hand, I'm sure we'll have other questions come up throughout discussion. Open up to the public, public input on this item. All right, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. I think a lot of it has been touched on, but I just do want to highlight that downtown is transforming thanks to our new medical school. We also have a new culinary arts school going downtown. Of course, we have the baseball stadium, we have a lot of more commerce and entertainment and also more folks who are living downtown. We might actually see, I think with some of the stuff on the horizon, more investment into downtown that will attract more folks there. And the goal is to make sure that we are modernizing our streets with an eye towards safety as much as possible when we increase pedestrians. No one wants to hear more stories of folks getting hit by cars or anything along those lines when they're just trying to get to their apartment or go meet mom at the library who's just getting out of class at one of our institutions that are now located downtown. So again, just thanks for, to staff and to our consultant for continuously working on these plans so that we can have our streets modernize and keep up really with the growth in our economy. And also, thank you to the folks, I believe it was over 24, public engagement opportunities. They said dozens on, on the slide, but I thought the number might have been about 24, 25. Also, 20,000-plus postcards going out to stakeholders in downtown area. This seems like one of the most, I guess, publicly engaged projects we've had, or I've seen in a long time from my position. So I do want to thank folks for reaching out, really getting stakeholders involved and being able to bring this project to where it is today, where we can vote on it and keep moving forward. So with that, I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the resolution endorsing the Wichita Downtown Streets Conceptual Plan and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk, roll up and roll, members cast their vote. I've received 7 yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam clerk.
2023 arterial sidewalk program.
Welcome back.
I'm Mayor, Councilmembers Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. Again, the item for you is request for funding for the 2023 arterial sidewalk program. The adopted capital improvement program includes an ongoing fund to install sidewalks and accessible ramps on arterial streets. Proposed locations for this year so far are 34th Street South and 29th Street North, which I'll talk about in just a moment. So currently, council actually has a policy that says we build sidewalks on both sides of all new arterial and all new and reconstructed arterial streets. That was not always in place. We've got some streets, arterial streets throughout the community that currently do not include sidewalk. Some of those may have been annexed in from the county, and so generally we take requests from the citizens. Sometimes it comes through council members. We have this discussion with the Bike Pet Advisory Board, and we find areas where sidewalk is needed, and this program has done really good to help with that. This funding was not available for the last two years, so 2023 is the first time it's available again. So far, we've got two locations, but I expect as the year goes on that we will have other requests. Just to show you what we did during the last program, the picture on the left is sidewalk on 37th Street North, east of Riz Road. This is a good example of a road that had been in the county as the city developed around it. It helped us to make improvements to connect the neighborhoods there. This picture on the right is McCormick, west of Osage. This provided a really critical connection of a gap in sidewalk near Wichita West High School. So the two locations we're looking at for this year, this is the first one in the red, maybe a little bit hard to see. To the left of your screen is Seneca Street, and right there at 34th Street is a pedestrian crossing, signalized crossing. The sidewalk will allow a connection then over to what you see on the right side of Wichita South High School. We've had requests for this for several years now in working with Councilmember Hoheisel. That request came to us again, so this will be a good one to get done. The other location we've got right now on the left side of the screen is the Stryker Multi-Sport Complex. 29th and Greenwood's intersection is top center. We actually have several things going on, working to signalize that intersection, and so at the same time, I think it makes a lot of sense to connect sidewalk then over to the Stryker facility. There's multiple locations of sidewalk along Greenwood's 27th with everything that's been going on with that development. The adopted CIP includes $900,000 in 2023 for design and construction of arterial sidewalk and accessible ramps. Staff's requesting approval of all that funding at this time. Again, we think that there will be an opportunity for additional locations as they come up, and I would be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there any input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench for the discussion on this item. Vice Mayor Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I appreciate the work you've done on this. There have been numerous concerns about the walkability from South High to that crosswalk, so it's a good thing that we're getting this going, and I appreciate the public also pushing us on this issue, and we're going right from the main entrance of South High right to the crosswalk, so safety of our children always comes first, so I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Is there any way we could get a West High logo put in that sidewalk?
Maybe, maybe a workshop in the future. Maybe we'll workshop that one, go ahead and task force it for a few years. Councilmember Boobah.
Thank you. Just, just want to echo my colleagues' comments on this. You know, I've noticed for years, if you go down there around the lunch hour, stuff around South High, everybody's just walking down the middle of the street, so this is a lot better resolution, so I appreciate everybody taking action on this.
Yeah, and I'll just chime in and echo what others have said before we make the motion, but, you know, South High School is a place where I used to serve at as an AmeriCorps member. It's the heart of the district I represented and the... member, it's the heart of the district I represented and the legislature and one that I live close to, and frankly, the neighborhoods around there, you see a lot of first-time homeowners, you see a lot of young families, and the ability to be able to walk on these sidewalks with a stroller so you can get around is very important, not just for the safety of the students, but again, the safety of those folks who are back in a neighborhood who want to walk to Seneca Street so they can get to Walmart or to Dylan's or to any of the other commerce that has really just kind of propped itself up over the last decade. So being able to modernize our sidewalks in response to really growth, I think, is a key goal here, and it seems like this plan does that. So I do want to thank staff with this, and because of that, I will happily make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the project and locations, adopt the resolution, and then authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll, and members shall cast their vote. Have received seven yay votes, that motion does indeed pass. Madam Clerk.
Bee City USA.
The controversial stuff. Welcome back.
Good to be back. Troy Hatman, Director of Parks and Recreation. The item I have for you today is in regards to Bee City USA, and it's all the buzz.
Wait, was that a joke?
Yeah, yeah. All right. A little bit of background, there are over 3,600 species of bees in the United States. Bees and other pollinators experience population decline due to habitat loss, poor nutrition, pesticides, parasites, disease, and climate change. Pollinator-friendly communities can benefit local and regional economies. Healthier ecosystems, increased crop yields, increased demand for pollinator-friendly plants, materials from local growers. And you see the logo on the right-hand side, it's the logo for the Bee City USA, making the world safer for pollinators, and that's really what we're after, we want to make some impacts to make our community safer for pollinators. And earlier, we did a proclamation for the Monarch Butterfly, which is very similar in the same situation. So Bee City USA mission is to galvanize communities to sustain pollinators responsible for reproduction of almost 90% of the world's flowering plants species by providing them with healthy habitat, rich in variety and native plants, and free to nearly, or nearly free pesticides. And that is something that we're working on a regular basis with our policies and procedures and our working regimes in our parks and in our golf courses. To further the analysis, Grassland Groupies, a local nonprofit, approached the Parks and Recreation Department about becoming a designated Bee City USA. Part of the requirement is to adopt a resolution supporting Bee City USA mission, including creating a Bee City Planning Committee. Grassland Groupies will be that planning committee, and there will only be advisory, not a city board or a commission. The Parks and Recreation Department will sponsor this committee, and the Parks, I'm sorry, the Park Maintenance and Forestry Superintendent will be a liaison to that committee, and that's going to be David McGuire. Park and Recreation will coordinate with the support of community activities, which aligns with Parks and Recreation values, initiatives towards preservation and environmental sustainability. This will include educational events, public information about pollinators developing pollinator-friendly habitats, and drafting policies regarding pollinator protection and integrated pest management, which is some of the things we already do, and we already do have two bee hives, one at Clap Park and the other one at Botanica. So we are already working on this project to a certain degree. So financial and legal considerations, Parks and Recreation is not obligated to support Bee City Planning Committee financially, but there is a $500 annual Bee City USA renewal fee that we will gladly pay. We will work and to support, if budget allows, sponsoring educational events and partnering with them in those events and other potential opportunities that will support Bee City USA and the Parks and Recreation Mission. The Law Department has reviewed and approved the Bee City USA Resolution to as form, and has recommended that City Council adopt the resolution, designate the city of Wichita as a Bee City USA affiliate, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Troy, just real quick, that one bullet item that said pollinator-friendly habitats, is that something that we're going to kind of plant into some of our larger parks, like different types of flowers and stuff?
So those are some of the things that we do right now in regards to looking at landscaping areas, and we are moving a little bit more towards zero scapeing, but we want to make sure that those plants are pollinator-friendly. But as we start doing some more community gardens, as we do other projects, those are always things that we think about in regards to the landscaping.
Further questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? Do you have any members of the Grassland Groupies? See none, I like the name, by the way. Bring discussion back to the bench. Vice Mayor Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to point out that Grassland Groupies, they're also going to be assisting us in building these pollinator gardens as well. They have various connections throughout the city as far as getting the plants for free or at a discount, and they're willing to do the work to help us implement these, so I appreciate everything they've done, and this ties into our earlier item about pollinator gardens, and it's just a great thing to see our city embracing, so I appreciate all the work you guys are doing.
Further discussion? Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to piggyback on Vice Mayor Hoheisel. I received lots of feedback from members of Botanica, lots of members from the Riverside area that are very involved in community gardens and are very excited about potentially being a Bee City, so I will be supporting this item. Thank you.
Further discussion? See none. With that, if there's no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to adopt the resolution, designate the city of Wichita as a Bee City USA affiliate, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll, members shall cast their vote. Have received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. We look forward to working alongside the Grassland Groupies to ensure that we are a pollinating city. Madam Clerk.
Repair or removal of dangerous and unsafe structures.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm not sure that my topics will create quite the buzz as the last one. Sorry.
Just wing it, coming from Councilmember Fry, that was too good to not say on the microphone.
I will, and I'll keep my stinger in, too. So, little levity this morning. Again, Kaylin Nethercot with MABCD, the property is under consideration today for public hearings. Our 11 of 16 cases first reviewed by the Board of Code Standards and Appeals on November 7th, 2022. Of today's 11 properties, seven are in District 1, one is in District 2, and three are located in District 3. Our first property for consideration is 945 North Pershing Avenue, it is in District 1, it's had an open housing case for one year and six months. The property taxes are in arrears for 2022 in the amount of $1,131.67, which includes special assessments for abatements and an emergency board up. The property was placarded as uninhabitable in July of 2021. The last water consumption at the property was in March of 2015. Two reported police incidents have occurred in this location in the last five years. The current premise conditions include tree debris and overgrown vegetation. The structure itself is a vacant one-story frame dwelling roughly 35 by 40 feet in size, has a shifting and cracking concrete basement wall with missing concrete, rotted and missing wood siding, a badly worn composition roof, deteriorated front and rear porches, and the windows and doors have rotted wood trim. No one attended the November 7th meeting to represent this property.
Questions for staff? My apologies, I see you're still going through the slideshow, so I might have...
I had more on this one than I thought, my apologies there. A lot more.
Chair recognizes Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Hoheisel as this item falls within District 3.
It's in District 1, Mayor.
My apologies. As this resides in District 1, the chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Is anyone here representing this property? All right, seeing none, I move that the City Council close the public hearing, declare the building to be a dangerous and unsafe structure, and accept the BCSA recommended action to proceed with condemnation, allowing 10 days to start demolition and 10 days to complete removal of the structures.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll, members cast their vote. Have received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk, excuse me.
Our next property is 1239 North Mathewsen Avenue, it does have a front and rear structure. This property is in District 1, it's had an open housing case for four years and four months. The property taxes are in arrears for 2021 and 2022 in the amount of $1,629.51, which includes special assessments for mowing and an emergency board up. This property is located in a floodplain. In 2020, a floodplain development permit was reviewed and issued, and subsequently, building and electrical mechanical permits were obtained but expired with no work performed and no inspections noted. The last water consumption at the property was in May of 2018, and the meter was removed in April of 2022. The property was damaged by fire in September of 2018. The current premise conditions include tree debris, overgrown vegetation, and a box truck. The structure is a one-and-a-half-story frame dwelling roughly 27 by 67 feet in size, it's been vacant for at least three years, has missing and fire-damaged vinyl siding and a worn composition roof. The second structure is a one-story frame dwelling roughly 24 by 20 feet in size, the structure has missing and fire-damaged vinyl siding and a composition roof with fire ventilation holes, ventilation holes, easy for me to say, fire-damaged wood trim and framing members. A 24-by-12-foot wood accessory structure is in good condition. No one attended the November 7th BCSA meeting to represent the property, but since then, we have had contact with the owner who's out of the country at the moment. I've also spoken to the contractor that originally pulled the building and electrical mechanical permits on the property. The owner will not be back in the country until around March 1st, and so at this point, we'd like to recommend a 90-day extension on this. There are some implications from it being located in a floodplain, we need some time to work through those nuances with the owner and see what he plans to do, if anything, to salvage the structures. My staff does a great job with pictures.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Fry.
Thank you. Kaylin, how long has this owner had the property? You've said there's four years history on this, how long have they owned it?
Since 2019.
And no communication during that time?
Only through the floodplain development permitting and the building and construction permitting process. It wasn't on our radar screen until it began to deteriorate even further. Now, it's my understanding that he's been in and out of the country several times over that last four-year period, but again, we haven't had a chance to actually talk with him in any way other than email, so we'd feel a little more comfortable if we had that conversation with him back in the country.
And is the box truck operable, or is it violating a permit condition also?
That is a great question. Because it's backed in so tightly, we can't see the license plate, we, I'm assuming we've checked to make sure it's not stolen, we can do that, but I think it is part of, I think the owner owns the box truck as well.
Further questions for staff? See none. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Given our conversation and the fact that the owner is out of the country currently, I agree with the deferment. If not for that, I would probably move to proceed, but for this address, I would move that the City Council defer this item to May 9th.
May 9th?
May 9th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and is seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll, members shall cast their vote. Have received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Next item.
Our next property is 1518 North Green, it's also in District 1, it's had an open housing case for nine months. The property taxes are in arrears for 2021 and 2022 in the amount of $500.11. It was placarded as uninhabitable in April of 2022. The last water consumption at the property was February 2019. The current premise conditions include scattered miscellaneous debris and some overgrown vegetation. The structure is a vacant one-story frame dwelling roughly 43 by 38 feet in size. Vacant and open, the structure has a shifting and cracking concrete block foundation with missing blocks, cracked and missing combination siding, sagging and badly worn composition roof, deteriorated front porch, and a dilapidated 10-by-10-foot accessory structure. We did have an owner present at the November 7th meeting, and I believe she's here today and would like to join us at the podium.
Good morning and welcome, thank you for being here.
Good morning. I do have a contract on this house, someone is buying it, we're supposed to close on the 30th, they're interested in revamping the house. Supposed to close on 30th, March 30th.
March 30th is, okay.
So this is new information, so we'd also be very comfortable in giving an extension on this property as well to let that sale have time to play out and give us an opportunity to work with the new owner on their intentions for the property.
Very good. There are questions for staff? See none. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. With that information, I'm comfortable deferring this one as well. I would move that the City Council defer this item to May 9th as well.
The motion is to have this item come back on May 9th? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll, members shall cast their vote. Have received seven yay votes, that motion does pass.
Thank you. Our next property is 1606 North Chautauqua, this property is in District 1, it's had an open housing case for nine months. The property taxes are in arrears on this one for 2020 through 2022 in the amount of A special assessment in the amount of $1,193.09 is pending for 2023 for an emergency board up. The property was placarded as uninhabitable in April of 2022, the last water consumption at the property was in May of 2015, and the meter was removed in April of 2022. The current premise conditions include lawn mowers, bulky waste, and scattered debris. The accessory structure is also unsecured. The structure itself is a vacant one-story frame dwelling roughly 56 by 31 feet in size, it has a shifting and cracking concrete basement walls, missing vinyl siding, sagging and badly worn composition roof with holes, dilapidated front and rear porches, and deteriorated wood trim. As you'll see from the picture in front of you, the accessory structure has a caved-in roof and is extremely compromised structurally. We did not have anyone attend the November 7th meeting on behalf of this property.
Questions for staff? See none. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Is there anyone here representing this property?
Good morning and welcome, thank you for being here.
Good morning. I am Karen Edgar, one of the owners. I left that house and moved out in... I left that house and moved out in 2017. I wasn't aware of all these repairs that needed to be done. But, in that, I have got a buyer for the home, which we actually tried to close on. But I didn't, then he was telling me about this condemnation. That's what's, what, well, this hearing. So, yeah, I had a buyer. I have a buyer still. So, I'm just asked if I could get an extension and for him to begin the repairs that needs to be, because he wants the property.
Are you both owners?
Yes.
So, you both agreed to sell that property?
Yes.
You said you moved out in 2017.
I did.
The water was disconnected in 2015.
Yeah. Well, I was in and out, yeah. He was there. It was rough, man. It was rough.
Okay. That is definitely a structure that needs some, some help. If you do have a buyer, that's good.
Yes, sir.
He's supposed to be here.
Okay. Well, I don't mind deferring this as well. Hopefully, the 90 days gives you time to close on that.
Yes.
And get someone in there who's gonna make those repairs to that house.
He will.
So, I am comfortable doing that if you both, as owners, are agreeing to sell.
Thank, yes, we are.
Other questions?
No.
Councilmember Johnson, what are you thinking?
I'll go ahead and, May 9th is gonna be a busy day.
May 9th is gonna be a busy day. Let's go ahead and order lunch that day.
Yeah. I think after this, I might change the date. But I would move that the Council defer this item to May 9th as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Having received 7 yay votes, that motion does pass. This item will be deferred till May 9th. We do thank folks for coming in and giving us some of that background information, and we hope you are successful in selling the property. Next item. Our next item within this item.
Our next property is 1627 North Chautauqua. Properties in District 1 had an open housing case for nine months. The property taxes are in arrears for 2022 in the amount of $1,131.67, which includes special assessments for abatements and an emergency board up. The property was placarded as uninhabitable in April of 2022. The last water consumption at the property was in October of 2011. The meter was removed in April of 2022. The current premise conditions are maintained. The second floor of the structure is unsecured. The structure is a vacant one-and-a-half-story frame dwelling roughly 32 by 36 feet in size. It has a shifting and cracking concrete basement walls, rotted and missing wood siding, dilapidated front and rear porch, excuse me, rear porches, deteriorated wood trim, and a neglected accessory structure. No one attended the BCSA meeting on November 7th to represent the property.
Questions for staff? Seeing none, Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Is anyone here representing this property? All right. Seeing none, I would move that the City Council close the public hearing, declare the building to be a dangerous and unsafe structure, and accept the BBCSA recommended action to proceed with condemnation, allowing 10 days to start demolition and 10 days to complete removal of the structure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Ever received 7 yay votes, that motion does indeed pass. Next item within this item.
Our next property is 1641 North Chautauqua. It's in District 1. It's had an open housing case for nine months. The property taxes are in arrears for 2020 through 2022 in the amount of $1,095.77, which does include special assessments for abatements and emergency board ups. There are pending special assessments for 2023 totaling $2,407.92. This property was placarded as uninhabitable in April of 2022. The last water consumption at the property was in October of 2014. The meter was removed in April of 2022. The current premise conditions contain scattered debris. The structure is a vacant one-and-a-half-story frame dwelling roughly 48 by 39 feet in size. It has shifting and cracking concrete basement walls, missing vinyl siding, sagging and badly worn composition roof with holes, a dilapidated front porch, deteriorating trim, and a 10-by-14 accessory structure that is also in very poor condition. No one attended the November 7th BCSA meeting to represent the property.
Questions for staff? Seeing none, Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Is there anyone here representing this property?
Welcome.
Well, it's kind of disturbing. I grew up on this block, and I knew the lady there. It's kind of disturbing to see all the houses go like they do. But we had family issues with probate and stuff like that. My sister was the point person on fixing up the house. Apparently, we all have come to the degree that I'd be the one to try to save it and bring it back together. So, I would ask the Council to allow me to, time to try to bring it back up to livable conditions.
Is your name on the property?
No, I've been going through probate. I filed the deficit tickets and all that stuff, trying to figure out how to get it out of probate. Apparently, lawyers want $300 an hour to try to do it. And with the price of the house, they say that you don't have to go through probate because of the, the value of the property. So, I'm trying to figure that out. And once you get that figured out, then the house will be transferred over to me to try to bring it back up to standards.
So, it's, it's just you and your sister? It was left to you both?
Do it again.
The house was left to you and your sister, or just your sister?
Well, no, it wasn't left to anybody. It just, you know, our parents died, and, you know, there was no will. There was no anything. And so, then we tried to get everybody to have their agreement, and my sister, closest to me, was the one that was supposed to be getting it back up. But nothing ever happened. Couple people tried to buy it, but apparently, the family wanted to try to save it. So, that's my task, to try to bring it back up, so.
Well, before I ask Kailin a question, I would recommend if staff is reaching out, that you all work with, with our team. I mean, they are connected to a lot of resources that could help and definitely would keep you up to date on the process before it comes to Council.
Yeah, any resources would be welcome. And so, yeah, if there's something that we, we can do to get it together.
To make sure you stay in touch with staff. It says that no one was at the BCSA meeting. You gotta definitely stay on top of those meetings.
Yeah, they were, she was supposed to do that. So, this is just me picking up from where she, she lives in San Antonio, so she really couldn't get things going. So, hopefully, you know, get it back together.
Kailin. A lot of work on those properties. What do you think on that, as far as timeline?
I don't think a deferral would be out of line on this. We would need a chance to check the ownership status. As you all well know from prior instances, that probate is not a quick process. So, but if it's already begun, I'm optimistic that it's further along. So, if you're comfortable with an extension, we'll, we'll work with that.
How, how long does that normally, is that more like a, I think we did that once, and it was six months?
About nine, start to finish. And I apologize, since I don't know exactly where they are in the process.
Make sure I don't mess my math up.
Vice Mayor, off the top of your head, do you know what nine months from today is?
November. Okay. Keeping that timeline in mind on nine months, I would move to defer this item to the November 7th Council meeting.
All right. So, the motion is to defer this item to November 7th Council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Ever received 7 yay vote, 7 yay votes, that motion does pass. And is there, just for the good of the body, is there a resource or a website that kind of has a checklist of folks who are going through the probate process and going through this type of process that we could, I may send people to who are just getting notification that a loved one's house is in this situation so that we could try to help them through that?
We typically refer them to Kansas Legal Services. And then, I believe the Wichita Bar has some, has some resources as well. The probate process is, it's long and it's expensive. That's what we've learned. It takes a while, and it's not, it's not cheap to do it.
It's unfortunate.
Yeah.
Next item.
All right. Our next property, and I believe this is the last one in District 1, has had an open housing case for 11 months. It's 2117 East Shady Brook Lane. The property taxes are in arrears for 2017 through 2021 in the amount of $2,156.30, which includes special assessments for several forced mows and a premise abatement. The property was placarded as uninhabitable in February of 2022. The last water consumption at the property was in December of 2016, and the meter was removed in April of 2022. Current premise conditions are maintained. The structure itself is a vacant one-story frame dwelling roughly 25 by 33 feet in size. It's vacant for at least a year. It's got a shifting and cracking concrete basement walls, rotted and missing masonry siding. And the rear and front porches are dilapidated. And then, of course, you saw that the bricks are falling off the front of it. No one attended the November 7th BCSA meeting to represent the property.
There are questions for staff? Seeing none, Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Is there anyone here representing this property? Okay. Seeing none, I did receive an email of concern about this property. I was also then later informed that staff had let the, someone else had purchased this property. They knew what they were purchasing and still has no contact with staff. Every bit of information as far as the condemnation status, responsibilities of the buyer, all of that was given to the owner, who has owned this property for several months now, and they still have not maintained any contact with staff. With that, and with them not being here, me not hearing from them, and knowing that staff has given all information to them, as well as the Treasurer's Office, I would move that the City Council close the public hearing, declare the building to be a dangerous and unsafe structure, and accept the BBCSA recommended action to proceed with condemnation, allowing 10 days to start demolition and 10 days to complete removal of the structure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Ever received 7 yay votes, that motion does pass. Now, we're in District 2.
There we go. This property is located in District 2 and was heavily damaged by fire over a year ago. I do have good news on this. The Mobile Home Park has hired a reputable contractor to remove the structure and clear the premises. It should be gone by this week, if it isn't already. It is a contractor that is well-known to us, and so, we have great confidence that that will be accomplished. We'd recommend returning this property to regular code enforcement, and that would allow us to deal with any lingering premise conditions, should there be any.
Questions for staff? Seeing none, Councilmember Tuttel.
Thank you. Jennifer from Legal, would it be appropriate for me just to recommend staffs, to take the staff's recommended action?
Yes, and we might ask if there's anyone from the public here as well.
Of course. Thank you. Is there anyone here from the public regarding this item? Seeing none, with that, I would make a motion that we take staff's recommended action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Clerk will open a roll. Members will cast their vote. Ever received 7 yay votes, that motion does pass. Onward to District 3.
Okay, our next property is 1125 South Fabric Drive. It's located in District 3. It's had an open housing case for seven months. The property taxes are in arrears for 2019 through 2022 in the amount of $2,171.86, which includes special assessments for several forced mows, premise abatement, and an emergency board up. The last water consumption at the property was in January of 2018. The current premise conditions include tree waste, scattered debris, and scrap guttering on the front porch. The structure is a one-story frame dwelling roughly 25 by 33 feet in size, vacant for at least three years. It has a sagging and badly worn composition roof with holes, a deteriorated rear porch, and an 8-by-8 accessory structure that's in fair condition. No one attended the November 7th BCSA meeting on behalf of this property. Just a couple of other notes about this. You can't see this from the pictures because it's very difficult for us to get good pictures. The roof is compromised enough that the ceiling is collapsing inside of the home. Again, we can see it through the windows when we were securing it and that sort of thing, but not well enough to get pictures that you can see. Now, in what can only be described as a late-breaking development, as is about 9:30 this morning, Kim Smith Martin, who is a realtor that is known to us, came and caught Chris and I in the hallway, Mr. Laborman and I in the hallway. She's in the process of trying to purchase this home. She's been in contact with the owner, who's out of state. She provided the receipts where the owner had paid the property taxes last night. So, they've brought those current, from all that we can see. I would be very comfortable in a 90-day extension on this to give us time to work with, hopefully, the new owner to see if this property can be salvaged. She is known to us. She was at the Board of Code Standards Appeals meeting yesterday and has followed through on other properties. So, we're comfortable making that represent, making that recommendation.
Okay, I can appreciate that because, I'm sorry, I don't mean to get out of line here.
No, I think we're good. No one's on the board, therefore, I assume there's no questions for staff. You have the floor, Vice Mayor.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that because it looks like the, the rest of the house is in solid shape. So, if they can get that roof replaced and do some repairs, I think that would be best. So, I do appreciate your work on that, and I am comfortable with deferring action on this item until May 9th.
Now, I'll second that motion. There is a motion to delay until May 9th. That motion has been seconded. Clerk will open a roll. Members shall cast their vote. Ever received 7 yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk. Excuse me. We're on the same item, so onward to Jay.
Our next property is also located in District 3. It has had an open housing case for nine months. The property taxes are in arrears for 2019 through 2022 in the amount of $2,171.86, which includes special assessments for several forced mows, premise abatement, and an emergency board up. The last water consumption at the property was in January of 2018. The current premise conditions include tree waste, scattered debris, and scrap guttering on the front porch, very similar to the last one. Structure is a one-story frame dwelling roughly 25 by 33 feet in size, vacant for at least three years. You know what? That's not even the right description on this. It's a big house. It's in bad shape. So, bear with me. It's number 12 out of 13. I lost my mojo for just a minute on this description.
You got this.
We've not had any contact with the owner, no representation on this property. And some graffiti artists in the area have helped us with that.
All right, questions for staff on this? Seeing none, Vice Mayor Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anybody here who is representative of this property? All right, and I suppose that with this, I, I move that the City Council close the public hearing, declare the building to be dangerous and unsafe, and accept the BBCSA recommendation to proceed with condemnation, allowing 10 days to start demolition and 10 days to complete removal of the structure.
I'll second the motion. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Ever received 7 yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk. Excuse me. The presenter may proceed.
Thank you. Our last property is 1903 South Topeka, also in District 3. It's had an open housing case for over nine months. The property taxes are in arrears for 2021 through 2022 in the amount of $2,963.28, which includes special assessments for a forced mow and two emergency board ups. The property was placarded as uninhabitable in April of 2022. The last water consumption at the property was in May of 2020. The police have requested assistance with this property on multiple occasions. The police have requested assistance with this property on multiple occasions. The property is fire damaged but was recently re-roofed by a licensed contractor and with proper permits and inspections. The premise conditions include some scattered trash, tree waste, lumber, tires, and furniture. The structure itself is a one-story frame dwelling, roughly 39 by 29 feet in size, vacant for at least a year. It has a shifting and cracking concrete block basement walls, rotted and fire-damaged vinyl siding, sagging and badly worn composition roof with holes, and the front and rear porches are deteriorated. No one attended the November 7th meeting to represent the property. However, we recently have had some contact with the owner, and I apologize, I've not met him, so I don't know if he's here today. And it looks like he is.
Questions for staff? See none. Vice Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Could you come up here and speak to this issue? Please, sir.
Yeah, I just got the roof done on that about a month ago, and the reason I haven't done anything to it before that is because I've been trying to get funding for it, and I just got that approved. So that's the reason the roof was just done, so I'm in the process of cleaning it up. The stuff you seen in the backyard, that's no longer there because we cleaned that up this weekend. So right now, we're just waiting on, like, seeing how this goes, and we're going to start on the inside of it.
Okay, what else does he need to do in order to get the house up to code?
The work would need to be done by a licensed contractor since it's not owner-occupied, and there'd be building permits to obtain, possibly trade permits, depending on the extent of damage from the fire. We can help him with all of that, though.
Okay, I would be comfortable delaying the decision on this, but this is one of the houses that I get a lot of complaints about. We've had children getting inside this house. We've had emergency board ups twice now. So I really need to see some action here in the next 90 days in order to feel comfortable keeping this house because, again, numerous complaints from the community around it. So if I do extend it 90 days, again, I, we need to get moving on it and make sure that it's safe and secure.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Is this a situation with that permit program that we approved where those permits would be reduced for this type of action or free?
We'd have to check the geographic area, but there's a good chance it would be because of where it is.
If so, that's some good information.
What was it, Vice Mayor?
All right, thank you, sir. And again, please stay in contact with staff. We're going to be paying attention to this one. But I move that we delay action on this item until May 9th, the May 9th meeting.
Motion has been made to delay this item until May 9th. I will second that motion. Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk will open a roll. Members shall cast their vote. I have received 7 yay votes. That motion does pass.
Thank you for your time, and I apologize for my momentary loss of grasp of detail on 12 out of 13 properties. That won't happen again. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you so much for all you do.
I think she felt the sting of the issues today.
That didn't take long for you to join the dad joke club. Look at that. Madam Clerk?
C O N 2022-47, conditional use requests in the city to permit vehicle and equipment sales accessory to vehicle repair on property-zoned LC Limited Commercial District located at the southwest corner of South Broadway Avenue and East Kincaid Avenue, 2201 South Broadway.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Would you like to start us off with a dad joke?
Unfortunately, no. I've got lots, but I don't know about right now.
Noted.
Scott Wadel from the Planning Department. This, the applicant is requesting a conditional use for this site in order to be able to do vehicle sales, vehicle and equipment sales and vehicle repair at the site. This item is being presented because the applicant is appealing the Planning Commission recommendation for denial. In terms of the request, the applicant is, again, requesting a conditional use. The applicant has indicated that they are intending, they intend to develop the site with a service garage, sales office, vehicle display stalls, and customer parking. The applicant intends to develop 39 parking stalls on the property with 12 stalls allocated for customer use and 27 allocated for display. Vehicle repair is permitted by right in the LC District. However, vehicle sales, which will be the primary use on the site, requires the conditional use and is subject to supplementary regulations. About the property specifically, the subject site, as you can see here, is located southwest corner of Kincaid Avenue and Broadway, just two blocks north of Pawnee Avenue. It is zoned LC Limited Commercial District and is currently vacant. It also has frontage on Broadway and East Kincaid, accessible from both streets. In terms of the context, properties to the north are zoned LC Limited Commercial and SF5. LC properties are developed with commercial buildings. The SF5 properties are predominantly developed with single-family homes. Properties to the south are zoned LC Limited Commercial and B Multi-Family. These properties are developed with a senior living apartment community. Properties to the west are zoned SF5, single-family residential, predominantly developed with single-family residences. The subject site and surrounding area are located within the established central area and the south-central neighborhood plan area. In terms of car lots, there are four used car lots within less than a quarter of a mile from the site, all of them being along Broadway. In terms of conformance to plans, the requested conditional use is found to be impartial conformance with the Community Investments Plan, and is found to be in non-conformance with the South-Central Neighborhood Plan. Specifically, the South-Central Neighborhood Plan identifies used car lots as the least desirable land use for the area and strongly discourages conditional use permits that would allow any of these uses. In terms of review, on January 5th, the public hearing for this item was held at the Planning Commission. Planning Commission recommended denial of this application unanimously 13-0. No members of the public spoke in opposition to the application. On January 4th, the District Advisory Board heard the application and recommended denial 7-0. No members of the public spoke on this application. On January 19th, the applicant submitted a written appeal of the Planning Commission's action to deny this request. So for council action, it's recommended that City Council, alternatives include the following. You can override the Planning Commission recommendation, provide alternative findings, and approve the conditional use would require five of seven votes. Or you can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration. That would require four of seven votes. A quick note on process. City Council policy is that the public hearing for the planning agenda items occurs at the Planning Commission, and according to this policy, City Council does not typically receive comments on zoning items. So with that, I'll take you through some of the images and graphics. You can see here the aerial of the site. This is the zoning map showing the LC commercial zoning predominantly along Broadway. This is the comprehensive plan map showing commercials recommended at the site. Here's the site layout that the applicant submitted as part of the application. This is from the page in the South-Central Neighborhood Plan identifying that used car lots is one of the uses that they recommend not allowing additional ones. This is the protest map showing that there were zero protests submitted for this case. And then we've got photos from the site and the surrounding area. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. This item resides in District Three. The Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. There are quite a few car lots along the South Broadway corridor already, and this goes against the SoC Neighborhood Plan. And so with that, I recommend that we adopt the findings of MAPC and deny their requested conditional use.
I'll second. Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk will open a roll. Members will cast their vote. I have received 7 yay votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
P U D 2022-22, zone change request in the city from SF5 Single Family Residential to P U D Planned Unit Development to create a custom zoning district for mixed residential, generally located on the northwest corner of West Fourth Street North and North 135th Street West.
Good morning. Scott Wadel again from the Planning Department. In this case, the applicant is requesting rezone from SF5 Single Family to P U D Planned Unit Development, which is custom zoning. This is a non-consent case because there have been protests filed against the application and because the DAB and Planning Commission recommendations are different. In terms of the request, the applicant is requesting to rezone property, as you've heard, to P U D. On January 6th, this property was annexed into the city. Upon perfection of the annexation, the zoning was changed from SF20, which it was originally, to the SF5 Single Family Residential District. So this is a case that started out in the county. P U D language would permit a mixture of housing types to be developed on the site, including single-family residences, duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes. The applicant has used TF3 Two-Family Residential District as the base zoning for this customs P U D, and then modified the development standards and limited the density for the property. In terms of the property itself, the subject site is generally located at the northwest corner of Central and 135th Street. The property is 150 acres in size and currently is in use for agricultural use, farmhouse-related outbuildings, and just a private open space. In terms of the context, southeast and southwest corners of the intersection are developed with suburban-scale residential development within the city limits. To the north, our properties zoned SF20 Single Family Residential and SF5, developed with agricultural, in use for agricultural uses, and developed with single-family residential subdivision within the city limits. Properties to the south are developed with Highland Springs Second Edition and Highland Springs Commercial Edition, both within the city limits. Highland Springs Second Edition is zoned SF5 and developed with single-family residences. The commercial area is zoned LC and is currently vacant. In terms of the staff report, the staff report provided, provides information about permitted land uses, density, parking, setbacks, screening, and a shared use path proposed by the applicant. In terms of review, on December 1st, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item and recommended unanimously 13-0 to recommend approval, subject to staff recommendation. Members of the public spoke in opposition to this application with concerns regarding an increase in traffic, compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods, and the impact of development on public services. On December 5th, this is from the county, the Citizens Advisory Board recommended approval of the application 4-3, subject to staff recommendations, and members of the public spoke in opposition with very similar concerns that were expressed at the Planning Commission meeting. On January 3rd, the Wichita City Council approved annexation of this property. On January 4th, the District Advisory Board reviewed this application, recommended approval 6-1, with the condition that parcel one, which is the parcel on the southern portion, I'll point it out in a moment, should be limited to single-family dwellings. Members of the public spoke in opposition, citing many of the similar concerns that have been expressed at the previous meetings. Seventy-five valid protests were received against this case, with 12 located within the protest area. The total percentage of the protests within the protest area was just a little bit over 1%, so 1.76%. Therefore, adopting the findings of the MAPC and approving the case can be done with a simple majority. So in terms of council action, it is recommended that the City Council adopt the findings of the MAPC, approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on the second reading. This would require four of seven votes. Alternatives include the following. You can override the MAPC recommendation, provide alternative findings, and deny the zone change. Require five of seven votes. Or you can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration. That would require four of seven votes. And as always, City Council policy for planning items is that the public comment takes place at the Planning Commission meeting. So with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics and photos. So here's the site outlined in the dark blue. You can see the city limits in the dashed purple/pink color. So here's the current zoning map. You can see the peach kind of tan color, which is SF20, properties primarily in the county. You can see the white areas, which are SF5 zoned. This is from the comprehensive plan, showing that it's recommended for both residential and employment. This is the graphic that was accompanied and submitted as part of the P U D. You'll notice that parcel one, I know it's difficult to read, but parcel one is the one on the southern portion. In the middle is a reserve and a floodway. This is a map showing the flood plain in the area. This is the protest map. Again, the number of valid protests accounted for just a little bit over 1% of the protest area. And it has an irregular shape because this property is where the city and unincorporated county butt up against each other. Here are photos from the site, so in surrounding areas, looking south, looking to the north and west, along the street, looking at the subject site. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. As this item resides in District Five, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Frye.
Thank you and appreciate the presentation, Scott. This had a lot of community interest from the Highland Springs neighborhood. Most of the concern was about parcel one not being SF5. And so the motion I'm going to make is a compromise, that is, the MAPC recommendation, as well as the DAB. It has been shared with Highland Springs, as well as the applicant, and everyone seems to be in agreement with this. So with that, I move that Council adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the requested zone change, with the condition that uses on parcel one be limited to single-family dwellings, place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on second reading.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members shall cast their vote. I have received 7 yay votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Zone 2022-68, zone change requests in the city from LC Limited Commercial District to GC General Commercial District with protective overlay number 401 to permit recreational vehicle campground and warehouse self-storage, generally located on the northeast corner of East 47th Street South and South Hydraulic Avenue.
Scott Wadel again from the Planning Department. As you've heard, this case is a request for a zone change from LC to GC with a protective overlay. This is a non-consent item because there have been protests filed against the application. In terms of the request, again, the applicant's requesting a rezoning with a protective overlay. The applicant has indicated they intend to develop the site for warehouse, self-storage, and a 127-stall recreational vehicle campground. The two existing vacant buildings down in the southwest corner, you can see them on this aerial, would be used for the storage and warehouse. The majority of the site would be used for the RV campground. The applicant is also proposing a protective overlay that would limit the uses permitted by right on the site and also signage. This is described in the staff report. In terms of the property, the subject site is generally located to the north and east of the intersection of Hydraulic and 47th Street. It is 11.54 acres in size, zoned LC Commercial, and mostly undeveloped, except for the buildings you can see in the southwest corner. In terms of context, properties to the north are zoned MF29 Multi-Family and developed with a mixture of single-family and duplex dwellings. Property to the east is zoned MH Manufactured Housing District and developed with a manufactured home park. Properties to the south are zoned SF5 Single Family Residential and LC Limited Commercial. The SF5 properties are developed with single-family dwellings. LC properties are generally developed with commercial uses, and a number of them are undeveloped. Properties to the west are zoned SF5 and LC. The SF5 properties are developed with single-family dwellings. The LC properties are developed mostly with single-family dwellings, except for the properties at the intersection, which are, it looks like a auto repair gas station. Properties adjacent to the southwest are zoned GC General Commercial and developed with a gas station/convenience store. Within one-quarter mile to the west along East 47th Street is GC zoning, in addition to LI Limited Industrial zoning near the interchange with I-135. In terms of the staff report, the staff report provides information about the protected the staff report provides information about the protected overlay, protective overlay, signage, parking, lighting, landscaping, and screening. In terms of review, on January 5th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item. Recommended approval 13-0. Several members of the public spoke in opposition of this application at that public hearing. In general, their concerns were regards to negative visual impact, impact on property values, increase in traffic, challenges with safety, and possible light pollution. On January 4th, the District Advisory Board recommended approval 4 to 3, subject to the protective overlay. Several members of the public spoke in opposition to the application, generally with the similar concerns expressed during the Planning Commission. Several protest petitions were filed against this application. It totaled 7.5% of the protest area. Does not exceed the 20% threshold. Therefore, this request can be approved with a simple majority. In terms of council action, it's recommended that City Council adopt the findings of the MAPC, approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on the second reading. This requires, again, four of seven votes. Alternatives include the following: You can override the Planning Commission recommendation, provide alternative findings, and deny the zone change. Requires five of seven votes. Or you can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration. Requires four of seven. Again, just a quick note, this one falls under the policy for planning items, and council typically doesn't take public comments on those. Just a quick review of the photos and graphics. So here's the site. This is the zoning map, again, showing predominantly SF5 outwards, but LC nearby. This is from the comprehensive plan, showing employment as recommended land use. This is a graphic that was submitted with the application. It shows out the various lots for the RV park. This is from the South Wichita Hayesville Area Plan. It shows residential as the recommended land use in this area. This is the protest map, and it's zoomed quite a ways out because there is one protest that's at the very south end of this map. This is a more closed, zoomed-in version where you can see the protests in close proximity. Photos from the site. These are the buildings that are on the corner. And we really like taking pictures. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. The Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Hohaisel as this resides in District 3.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to override the MAPC recommendations and deny the zone change request from LC Limited Commercial District to GC General Commercial District with a protective overlay. In support of this motion, I offer the following findings: The suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. The property is currently zoned LC Limited Commercial and has direct frontage onto two arterial streets. The property is suitable for limited commercial development. Extent to which removal of the restrictive restrictions will detrimentally affect the nearby property. The use of the property for an RV park could have a detrimental impact to the surrounding residential properties, and this includes noise, light pollution, and visual impacts. Conformance of the requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive plan and policies. The requested zoning is not in conformance with the South Wichita Hayesville Area Plan, which recommends residential development at the site, and opposition of neighborhood residents. I have received negative feedback from plenty of neighbors, and my DAB was pretty evenly divided on this issue.
Motion has been made. I will second that motion. Clerk, roll open a roll. Members will cast their vote. I've received 78 votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Approval of travel for Councilmember...
Thanks, Scott. Sorry.
Approval of travel for Councilmember Tuttle to attend the Transportation Day at the Capitol, February 8th, 2023, in Topeka, Kansas.
All right, approval to travel. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I mentioned this during agenda review on Friday, but just to reiterate, I am traveling with staff tomorrow. I'm traveling with two staff. We're using a city vehicle. We are not staying overnight, and I'm not requesting per diem, so there's no cost to the city for this travel. Thank you.
All right, is there anything further discussion? If not, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the travel. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hohaisel. Clerk, roll open a roll. Members cast their vote. I've received 78 votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Appointments and comments. Let's start off with appointments. I will be appointing Thomas Montell to the Food and Farm Council. And I would like to acknowledge the appointments of Linda Johnson to the Cultural Funding Committee by the Arts Council. Are there any other appointments at this time? If not, then I'll make a motion to accept the appointments. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hohaisel. Clerk, roll open a roll. Members cast their vote. I've received 7 yay votes. That motion does pass. Back on comments. Are comments for the good of the body? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to shout out Phillip in planning. DAB last night went a lot later than I thought it would, and he was there, did a great job, answered everyone's questions fully and wholly, so that was good. Again, I didn't think we'd be there till 10 o'clock, but we were. So thanks, Phillip.
Further comments for the good of the body? I, again, do want to just extend our congratulations to Vice Mayor Hohaisel on the birth of his son. And good to see you back at work. You look a little more tired, which is to be expected.
Well, I'm not getting my beauty sleep, so I think everybody can appreciate if I start to slowly deteriorate up here. I know I got elected just because of my looks, but I'll have to figure something out the next time around.
So just for 30 seconds, how's mom and baby's?
Mom and baby are doing fine. Baby's already passed his birth weight, and we had a little bit of a trial during delivery, but mom is recovering nicely.
Okay, we're glad to hear it.
Thank you.
Further comments? See none. With that, I will move that the City Council recess into executive session for 45 minutes to receive information on a civil action pursuant to KS A754219B2 for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship on pending litigation legal advice. The executive session is required to protect the attorney-client privilege and the public interest. Making a motion to start the executive session at 11:30, and it will go until 12:15, in which we will reconvene back here in the chamber to finish up the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hohaisel. Clerk, roll open a roll. I've received 78 votes. We will be in executive session in about 13 minutes, and we will be back here around 12:15.